So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on our website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, will we post on the town website? An audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Madam Chair, you may now call to order if you wish. Just as a reminder, all meeting votes must be taken as roll call.
Okay, so I will call the meeting to order. We have a quorum present. We have Bill Holmans, John Demalia, Francois Stager, and myself. And we have some guests from MRPC. Do we have any public people on that you are aware of there?
We can check. Is Doug Cormier a member of MRPC as well?
I don't think so.
Mr. Ryan?
My dad, I spent $5,000. He apologized for first being in front of me while back.
Okay, he said no, meaning I don't believe he's part of MRPC. So during public comments, we may ask him why he's here.
Okay, well, we do open most meetings with an opportunity for the public to speak on matters that are not up for a public hearing. So if they wish to speak now.
I'm unmuting everyone just so that everyone is aware, so that if they wish to speak, they have the ability to.
Oh my gosh, I offended him. And the next day, he had to check on the cash for $5,000.
Mr. Cormier, you're unmuted. Would you like to speak?
Yeah.
No, thank you. He says, okay, alright.
Okay, thank you. I will re-mute anyone unless everyone, anyone wishes to speak.
You have to tell him to turn off the sound. Okay, so I had, we're gonna juggle this just a little bit. Because we were gonna, we thought Ryan would be in, our town administrator, Ryan McLean. And we were gonna give him first up because he's got multiple meetings, but instead, we're gonna start with, because he isn't here, but will be here later, we're gonna start with the MRPC presentation on transportation. And we have three people here from MRPC. Brian, Brian, what's your last name? Is he, has Brian joined us?
I'm currently promoting them to panelists, so they'll be.
Okay, Jonathan Boss and John Hume. And I guess it's, was it Jonathan who's going to do the presentation?
That is correct.
Okay, so Jonathan, transportation, this for the public that hasn't been following us closely. This is the transportation of the master plan, which we're in the process of producing. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, the, this is specifically the recommendation portion of the transportation element of the master plan chapters that MRPC is doing on behalf of Hubbardston. And I hope you all have had the chance to review the recommendations. We sent them out a little earlier in the week, that portion specifically.
It is on your shared drive.
Yes, did you share it?
I did.
Can you review it for us, for those of us who somehow missed it?
Yeah, I was planning to go over it fairly quickly. Not very long, it's only a couple pages. But I'll try to keep it brief because there's, this isn't the only thing you're doing tonight. As the goals, objectives, and recommendations that MRPC has created for the master, for the master plan transportation chapter. The ultimate goal is to construct and maintain a safe road system that is consistent with the desired town's character. Maintaining roadway management plans to achieve maintenance-oriented roadway network conditions and provide basis for established priority and budget allocation. We have ten listed recommendations that we are proposing on behalf of the town for future work and to carry on in the future. The first of these is simply continue the proactive participation with MRPC for project development, prioritization, funding, and scheduling. And make use of pre-existing relationships and connections to the town's benefit. As part of this is the second proposed recommendation is to schedule traffic counts with MRPC every year. We solicit up to four traffic counts, locations per calendar year for each community that we serve. Hubbardston has a history of taking advantage of this program, and they should continue to do so. And to continue to establish key traffic count locations to maintain a robust record. We also propose that for sidewalks is make neighborhoods more pedestrian friendly through construction and rehabilitation of sidewalk and perhaps consider bike lanes. ADA compliance should be incorporated with current design standards. And it could be incorporated into a comprehensive circulation study plan, which is mentioned later on. Financing for needed roadway and sidewalk prepared for Hubbardston's existing local roads include enhancement funds, private-public partnership projects, and community development block grant funds in moderate-income neighborhoods for potentially eligible areas. And the town should also try to continue working with the Commonwealth Complete Streets Program to bring additional funding to transportation improvements and to enhance public safety. Safe routes to school should also be examined as a potential source of funding for improvements for infrastructure. Hubbardston is an SRTS partner and is eligible to apply for projects which are 100% financed by the program and include design funding.
What was that program again?
Safe routes to school, SRTS.
Okay, yeah, I've heard of it.
Is also part of this is work with neighboring communities and align the town with regional trail groups. For example, the Montechuset Regional Trail Coalition and the North Quavon Trails Association. To help establish and further develop a regional trail network that would link Hubbardston to other recreational opportunities that are outside of the town. They're currently limited by pedestrian trails within the community, and this will help build a park. Another proposed recommendation we have is a comprehensive circulation study of non-motorized users that could identify major travel routes, crosswalks, sidewalks, appropriate pavement markings, signage. And it should include major areas of concern for the town. With the town center being very high, the library, the post office, the schools, recreation facilities. And it could identify links that would also connect this to the aforementioned regional trail network. We suggested that the town should communicate with MRPC transportation staff to investigate the possibility of conducting a study under the Unified Planning Work Program, which would be at no cost to the community.
What was that called again, the unified?
MRPC's Unified Planning Work Program.
Okay, thank you.
Bridges, we previously discussed this, but Hubbardston has three structurally deficient bridges that are owned by the town. And they are all scheduled or in the process of being rebuilt and brought up to code. So it's not something that's out of the town's hands and is already being addressed. Also culverts, failed culverts are obviously a problem, as everyone's aware. And the town should conduct and maintain an inventory of culverts within the community and seek to identify a mechanism to clean, repair, update structures that are needed. And this would fall within the responsibility of the Department of Public Works. And this is also possibly being addressed with the municipal vulnerability program that Hubbardston's working with currently. We also proposed that Hubbardston's increases its communication and having more open dialogue with the Montechuset Area Regional Transit Remarque to mitigate the impact of declining service due to less federal funding and try to work to maintain bus routes at strategic locations in the town. Also analyzing traffic crash data and seek projects to address identified issues at major crash locations. Work with MRPC as well as the MASTDOT on projects and funding opportunities as they arise. And there are two primary locations recommended for further study. The Old Boston Turnpike at Worcester Road intersection crash cluster with the nine total crashes. And the Gardner Road Route 68 crash corridor with the 23 total crashes. And the last proposed recommendation that we have is a maintenance system to protect investment in roads and other public facilities. Lack of routine maintenance results in needless deterioration of replacement resulting in reduced utility of facility and greater long-term replacement costs. And MRPC recommends the town should consider the merits of applying the principles of pavement management when going forward with future maintenance schedules. When appropriate, the town should seek local federal funding assistance on eligible roads. Working with MRPC as well as MASTDOT on this as well could help discover and take advantage of funding opportunities for projects as they arise. And those 10 items are the proposed recommendations that we've created for the master plan transportation chapter.
That's great. Ties in really well with the MVP stuff I've been listening to.
The culverts is definitely, definitely has come up a number of times.
Yeah, and those bridges have been longstanding.
Luckily, those are under the process of being taken care of at no cost to the town. So it's good news on that market at least.
Do you see things that the planning board specifically should be doing with respect to transportation?
A lot of the responsible entities would either be the Department of Public Works for the town or the Board of Selectmen. If MRPC is drawn to do more planning or studies, there would definitely probably be a significant amount of overlap on there. Brian would probably know more.
Hi, yeah, this is Brian, this is Brian Doherty. I was at your meeting in March, I believe. Yeah, many planning boards contact us if they're interested in sort of getting standalone transportation studies. Most of the time, it's the DPW departments and other entities in town, but certainly planning boards have been involved before. In Hubbardston's case, the DPW department, Travis Brown, he's a regular at our NPO meetings. He's very involved. He's reached out to us along with the town manager in regards to study at Route 68 and Route 62. So I think we'll be undertaking that next year with the safety issues at that location. We've spoken to him about possibly assisting him in some pavement management issues next year and possibly getting a program in town. And there is a little upfront investment with that, but we would offer our services free of charge. It's just a matter of getting the appropriate training for the town employees. In the long run, that program is meant to save on construction costs and help to allocate your assets appropriately when it comes to the, for the infrastructure. But in terms of specific planning board involvement, it could be anything. If, you know, if there's interest from the board and a study at any particular location, you could reach out directly to us at MRPC. Or a lot of times, the go-between is, in terms of transportation, the DPW departments or the police departments.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Questions from other board members?
No, I think that sounds wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I hope we can do something with the bus system to give the seniors in town some better access. That seemed to be a big sticking point.
Do something with what, Alice?
With bus transportation for seniors.
Right, all we have right now is the night van.
Yes, I know, and that's very, Claudia was talking about the problems at the MVP meeting with the van usage stretched out, trying to serve too many people.
Yes.
But that's great. I guess the last question is, do you have a backlog of any of these traffic count studies?
Yeah, we typically have a traffic count program that has standalone locations, the same locations every year. And as Jonathan mentioned, Hubbardston's requested a number of locations in town going back years. So we keep track of that. It's actually available on our website. We also have detailed information if there's any further, if you seek any sort of detailed data on any of the locations. Now, this year, it's actually, we have a pretty robust traffic counting program. Although this year, we're sort of, it's, we're playing it by year this year. So those, that data is useful when you may go towards, you know, seeking a grant, transportation grants on a road. And it might be useful to have information going back years to determine how much the traffic has increased. Sometimes towns request us to do truck, truck exclusions on certain roads. It's useful to have data going back years, specifically with heavy vehicles. There's a number of different uses for the, for the data itself. But we actually keep a large catalog of the whole region.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, anyone? Thank you very much, and we will study it again. Do you need any kind of a vote from us to approve that?
Um, we will have to hold a listening session later on in the year for the master plan chapters. John, do we need a vote to approve the recommendations as is?
John's still with us.
You may have unmuted him, and he may have muted, re-muted himself.
Sorry.
Well, you know, it's not the last time you, you're gonna be around or we're gonna be talking about these issues. So for us, if you need a vote, it all sounded relevant and good to me.
Sounds good. I don't think we need a vote for anything, do we? No.
Okay, okay, great. Great. All right, so should we move on from the traffic study to the next item here? I guess Ryan is still not around.
I'm sure the next, the next item we have that also involves Mr. Hume is the master plan chapters going forward. There was some discussion of the planning board doing a survey.
Yes, yes. So John, do you have suggestions for us? I guess maybe we should update you if I haven't, I apologize. But we have decided because of the possibility that town meeting is gonna be difficult this year to postpone our, the articles that we were gonna put on the warrant till the fall, for a meeting in the fall. And I think with that, maybe postponing any kind of public hearings till closer, till sometime in the fall on these things. Does that set you back a lot?
But I think that would be fine.
Okay.
We could do that, and I don't think it would really set us back. It would be nice to do a public forum in June or May, but it's not realistic at this point in time. So I think the fall would be good.
Yeah, early fall, we'll try to.
Do we need a motion for that, Alice?
No, I don't think so. We already, I already told Ryan, you know, I told you guys about taking the articles off the warrant at his request. So they want kind of a streamlined meeting because they're not sure how it's gonna happen. So, so this would make sense too, I think. You really don't wanna hold a public hearing when the public isn't there, you know? It's, and the public wouldn't come out in this till we get a little further in the epidemic, I think.
Sounds good.
We had talked to John about a survey instead, which I guess is maybe worth considering, depending on how far things go. But Christina did some research on that. It's quite expensive to do a survey at a town of tight, a time of tight money, for just postage. Maybe Christina can fill us in.
With regards to the online survey itself, it's not incredibly expensive. But in order to get complete town inclusion on an online survey, we would probably have to do something like a postcard for every member of town, and that would run us a little less than $1,000 to send out that particular mailing.
So it seems like it might be worth the gamble to wait where we can hope a hearing in public again, to me. What do you guys think?
Francois, we can't hear you.
Is this better?
Yes.
All right. My question was, is this for every member of the town, or would this be for every household of the town?
When I discussed it with Bobby and Lori, the town clerk and the town secretary, they said that they've put out mailings of this type to households, and it would be a little less than $1,000 to do it to one to every household.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify because we do have multiple members who live in a household who could potentially be pulling this out, but I would agree that this should really go to the household.
I think it would be a good investment. What does everybody else think?
But I think the question is, would the, would the postcard say, come to our online session or fill out a survey online? Or would it, or we just wanna wait till fall and we can hold it, the hearings in person?
An online survey is a great idea, and it's one that probably costs less because it does not, it means that you don't have to get the postage, pay the postage for a return. However, you have to now pay somebody to put this, to put this online. So I mean, I don't know what the trade-offs are. I don't know if anybody has explored that. Or if you have any thoughts, Christina?
To be clear, the postage that was discussed is just for a single postcard to alert members of the public that there is an online survey to fill out. It had no return postage. This was not a physical survey. It would be more if we had to print out a physical survey and then give them return postage as well.
So there's various options. One is to have a, send something out, and people can put it, say, for example, in the box, in the town box, and they can return it that way. I think we have done that in the past. I remember certain years in the past where we have, the surveys were sent out, and people could fill them out and then just return them.
Idea.
The other, the other way of doing it is to do it online. And the problem with online is, is I don't know if everybody is as, as, you know, a computer savvy or have access to the online system. So I think there, there is that potential where we may be missing folks from town who may not be ready to participate in an online survey.
Are we gonna miss out or lose anything in this process if we postpone it till June?
The survey, you mean?
To do, to just postpone everything until we can have an actual meeting.
No, John was just saying we could go to early fall and it'd be okay.
Yeah.
I think the problem is with the survey is really, this presentation, you want to have, you wanna have the master plan chapters presented and asked for feedback. So in a survey, how would you present them? You know, I, I think that's the issue. I think it's, it needs a public hearing, I think, and a presentation.
I think that's a good point.
I think that's an important point also.
Yeah.
So John, why don't we wait and see what the governor's gonna do on the 18th? And then how things will unroll from there? And then try to set up, discuss some times.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense to me.
I have no problem with August either. A lot of people aren't around in August. They're typically low attendance, but.
Yeah.
But this year, probably nobody's going anywhere, so maybe we, we'd have good attendance. I don't know, but.
Probably have more attendance because everybody's stuck at home.
Wanting to do something.
Well, Jonathan's next. I mean, he's still finishing up some chapters. You wanna give us a quick rundown on where the master plan chapters are?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, so for master plan chapters, transportation seems like it's just about done.
Yep.
Just one of the recommendations that MRPC is proposing. Services and facilities is mostly complete at this point. I'm going to, during the MVP workshops, it was mentioned that wanting some of the emergency facilities, like the fire hydrants listed on there as well.
Yep.
So I'll be, I'll reach out to the fire chief sooner rather than later to see if there's an inventory of that available that could be provided. And we are also hoping to begin the housing chapter and the open space and recreation chapter fairly soon. And the open space and recreation chapter will draw in large part from the open space and recreation plan that Hubbardston has already provided us.
Yeah.
So that'll go along fairly quickly. The housing plan will not be drawing from the previous housing production plan.
Thank you.
As requested.
Yeah.
So that'll.
It was okay, it's just very out of date.
And so we'll be going through that with the fine comb. So we have all the correct data.
Okay, so one little piece of information that's very hot off the press here for the housing chapter is that there is presently an RFP that's out for the, for the first affordable house in town.
Okay.
We may get more than one bid on, but certainly Habitat of the Northeast Region or North Central Region plans to bid on it.
Madam Chair, you asked me to interrupt you and let you know when Ryan was on the meeting.
Is Ryan here?
Yes.
Ryan, hello, you're just in time.
Sorry, I have three Zooms tonight, so it's a very exciting Tuesday night.
Okay, well.
Wednesday.
We just had MRPC summarize the transportation chapter for us, which was great. And sort of bring us up to date on where we are. And our next order of business was to actually talk about funding for the master plan.
Yes.
A sort of bouncing around here, but that's what we'll do next. So John's here, John Hume, and his two other associates from MRPC. And the question was a discussion of how much the planning board is willing to contribute to the, the final chapter. And there's been quite a bit of discussion about that. If you wanna fill us in on what the select board's decided?
Sure, so based on the, based on the work that the planning board's done to get, to get us this far in the master plan, which has been great. One of the comments made was that they, we never thought we'd be in this spot this quickly, so I think that's a credit to the board. The, the selectmen, despite pulling almost everything from the town meeting warrant, feel like finishing the master plan is important enough to push forward even in, even in this COVID-19 version of town meeting, etc. So they've committed to a warrant article that would fund a little more than half of what MRPC has quoted as, is what this would cost. They worked with us on the cost too, which I really appreciate. And just so the board's aware, the selectmen are putting up there a little bit more than half, hoping that the planning board would match it. And we did apply for a planning assistance grant to try and fund this chapter regardless of using town funds. So we're hoping to get the grant, but we'd wanna finish the master plan. But we'd wanna finish the master plan. The desire to finish it is so strongly that. We're willing to put up, you know, the rest of the money to get it done, so.
Is five thousand to close the gap?
Yes.
Yes. All right. So this is not a new discussion among our board. And we had talked about sharing that cost. Because you, because it is really. You know, we've gotten tremendous help elsewhere and that eleven thousand is a very significant reduction and was originally quoted as well. But it really is the sort of the grand. Implementation chapter where everything comes together. So it. I don't know. Does anybody else in, the board members feel you need a quick summary of what's gonna, how the, how that chapter is gonna be assembled or do you guys remember?
This is John. I remember.
Okay.
This is Bill. I remember. Same here.
All right, so. Does someone want to make a motion that we. Use a match, well, not match, but contribute five thousand dollars in. Our available funds from the planning board to finish the master plan implementation chapter?
This is Bill Holmans and I'll make that motion.
This is from Switch Tiger. I'm seconding that motion.
Okay, there needs to be a roll call vote. Christina, we worded that motion correctly?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so lived all I.
From Switch Tiger, I.
Bill Holman's eye.
John D'Amelio, I.
Right. So there you have it. If you can. Get the grant, we wish you luck on that as well, but we need the plan, so.
I think the master plan is gonna, you know, the, the way it's being constructed and the way we'll, we'll use it is gonna. Set the town up for the next couple decades. So the, the planning board should be. I wanna sound prejudiced, but should be proud of the work that, that it's done there. It's, it's gonna make a real difference in the town, I believe.
Great. I agree with that. So MRPC folks. I thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay, but unless you have other, I don't have other items. Specifically addressed to you on this agenda, I don't believe. So.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, we'll try to figure out a good public meeting schedule as quickly as we can. So, thank you. All right. So our next item does involve Ryan as well. And that is to continue the discussion we started about tax title properties and the use of. Funds which, which already belonged to the planning board, which came from the CPA in an appropriation back in two thousand sixteen and then was. Renewed in two thousand nineteen. And we talked about if you, if you folks all remember the six identified lots. That Ryan and Sandy had gone through the whole list of tax title properties that. Might yield good land to continue with affordable housing. So there were some questions that came out of that. And Ryan's here and he can answer some of them. One of the questions was. If you. If you put up, if we put up the money and the property is redeemed. Say five thousand dollars for the legal fees and the owner comes back and they. They pay off all the taxes and the attorney's fees and so forth. What would happen to the five thousand dollars? Could it be rededicated to us? And so I asked that to Ryan and he's here to answer that question. Because it cannot be done as a simple contractual or letter agreement. It's more complicated than that. So Ryan, can you explain that?
It always is. So the, I've got two screens here, so I apologize if I'm not, if I'm not looking right at where I'm supposed to be, but the. So the, if, if a property was redeemed and five thousand was used from the, from the planning board and that money was received. That money would go into the general fund under our, our tax title penalties line item. So what it means to go into the general fund is. We wouldn't have budgeted that revenue or projected that revenue. So it would be new revenue to the town. So anytime you have new revenue to the town in a non pandemic type year. That money would be extra unaccounted for and would turn into what we call free cash. And I know a lot of you know this, but I'm just trying to speak to a larger audience as well. So the free cash is then used typically by the town of Hubbardson to fund capital projects. And invest in some infrastructure, et cetera. So direct, the answer, the direct answer is it would not go back into a fund. That the planning board could use without, without further appropriation. So what would that look like? I believe if the planning board was successful in obtaining these funds or redeeming these properties. That there would be a stronger appetite for an appropriation at town meeting for more money to do. Affordable housing projects because it would be seen as a success. So there is no direct way to say put it into a revolving fund and use it for that purpose. But if it is successful and there was this additional money, you could then put a warrant article together saying, we wanna reuse that money to do more of the same. And, you know, I never speak for a voter, but I, I do believe that's an appropriate request and, and would have a, a high likelihood of success.
Okay, so does that answer that your question? I don't know who raised that question. It was originally, I think Francois.
Correct. And I think what is important to note here then is, is that the reappropriation could continue. Cyclically until such a point in time where the town, for example, met its affordable housing quota requirements, right?
It, it could as long as, you know, you can never say that the town will vote to appropriate. And of course, there's years like this where. There'd be a lot of pressure to use that money for something else, but I don't.
That is a drawback to your point. Correct. Priorities might change.
And my point to, my point to Alice and a lot of this was there's also a risk to doing, to doing nothing. So. It's kind of one of these things where we're trying to, I share and I think this board's feeling it. And I know in conversations with Alice. I would like to get something done with affordable housing and it's not easy here. So we're just seeing up, we're trying to figure out opportunities to make something happen. And this might not be the right. Avenue for that. It might be the right opportunity, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it to the board as a potential.
I mean, the other point I think that we need to also understand here is, is that, that we are for all intents and purposes through this mechanism. Bringing properties back into the tax revenue cycle, which potentially are. These are properties that are currently not generating tax revenue for, for the town. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, so there is, there is that benefit that we get out of the, the, this investment regardless of. So even though there is that risk that we cannot reutilize it, but it has served its purpose, which I think is an important element to consider.
Well, I think also if you. If you succeeded in getting the taxes paid back, the town would be willing to reappropriate that. That money to us, you know, they'd say we gave the town a benefit.
The case would have to be made.
Out of it, right? So.
The case would have to be made and during the, during the town meetings when the warrants are presented to the towns. To the town, people of the town.
Okay.
I think, I think that's a great idea and that's, that's fine because unless something really drastic happens that year. That this all takes place and transpires, I think most folks would be very happy to. Re, reissue that money back to the planning board to do it again.
So we had talked about these, we talked about six specific lots, if you recall, and there. You actually have heard from one owner, right, Ryan? That doesn't plan to redeem it?
So I don't wanna talk too specifically, but. But we have, we have heard from, from one, yes, but. Some of this stuff can become a negotiation, so I would prefer not to talk about the details of it.
Okay. And we won't identify that lot.
The good thing is if, if someone identifies really quickly that they, you know, want to. You know, you'd incur a little bit of cost contacting the people and using the lawyers for that, but it's tiny. And if they. If they redeem their property, so to speak, then you're not investing a lot of money in that. You just move on.
Well, and I think the point that's made is just initiating the process. You don't necessarily think. You're not gonna have any solutions till five years out. So I think that's not a likely result. Likely result is. That you're gonna either have people. You know, square their bill with the town or come to us. It's at least as likely as having to wait for the whole thing to play out five years in land court. So. Anyway, that's interesting. And there's one thing I wanna point out about this issue and then we can go back and look at the lots. And that is. I did report to the CPC meeting that we went to. You know, what we're doing. I'm a member of that, that board. About the. The affordable housing law and so forth. And they did raise the issue, which is I know has been raised by this board about the use of. What were CPA funds for affordable housing? Can they be used to foreclose tax titles? So I said this issue would come up, that we had discussed it, that we believed it wasn't allowed use. But that we hadn't sought a formal opinion on it. But I just wanted to let the board know. That I did some research and I also notified the CPC on that question. And I found in the. Mass Housing Partnership Manual, which, you know, the. MHP manual talks about how to generate affordable housing. Anyway, their manual stated. States under their examples of eligible activities. This would be for use of CPC monies. It said CPA funds can support the construction of new housing on small lots in existing neighborhoods. Sites can be acquired. And then it says often through tax foreclosure, donated or purchased. So to me, that's a pretty definitive answer that it's an allowed use for these funds. But I just wanted to bring that about. And if there's any, any more concern about that. We'll go for, you know, we can seek more, more of an opinion on that, but I do think it's allowable. So. And then I guess there was another question that was raised, which was if we acquire a lot and it turns out not to be buildable. Because some of these lots are, you know, possible, that's a possible outcome. How do you see? Working with that result, Ryan? I mean, Ryan's point to me was you won't know if it's buildable until you can really explore it in detail and you can't do that till you own it. So there's some truth in that certainly, but.
So I can speak to what I, what, what I believe, what I would support is. So I wanna say my overarching thought on this is certainly only want to do what the board wants to do with this. This is. I have a desire to do affordable housing, but if this is not the way the board wants to do it, then I completely support doing it another way. We'll figure it out. A lot of the times, the problem with affordable housing is that you just never do things, right? It just never gets started. So a lot of these things take a long time. But they take as long as they take. And if you never start them. You never get to the point where you eventually do something. So a lot of the conversation has been, has been about starting something like this. But I could say if, if you, if the, the day we found out that something wasn't buildable or usable for affordable housing would be the day I recommend we stop using this money. For that so that we could try to use it for something else. Cause the point of this money is affordable housing. So. If that lot became another opportunity for something like, then we would find another use, another money that we could use in order to develop that lot or, or sell it, et cetera. So if things, things aren't buildable, we should just stop the affordable housing process part of it and move to a different direction.
Okay, so the first step in this process is to notify the owners of these lots. And that's all done?
That has been done.
Has been done. Okay, so.
That was pre COVID nineteen too, just to be.
So we could expect our town council to get to work on these if we. If we vote tonight. So the, the amount we, we have. The estimate was five thousand dollars in legal fees that Sandy gave us to start these proceed, or to get these proceedings through. Land court. So that would be, and there are six lots you were considering. So if we were gonna take all six of the lots and give it a try. It'd be thirty thousand dollars you're looking for. Correct?
And, and as you, that would be, in my opinion, that would be the maximum because as you stated, we're gonna find out in some of these that. It's, it's a dead end for affordable housing and we won't spend all of that money. So that's the cost if we went all the way.
So if we voted to, how, if, if we voted a sum up to thirty thousand dollars to be used for this purpose. Um, would that be the appropriate vote? Something else could be reached and you wind up not putting it in land court. You come back to us, we'll find another lot.
I don't wanna sound difficult, but I'm your agent. So you tell me, if, if you give us five, we'll, we'll act. If you give us thirty, we'll act. I mean, that would be. More than enough, I think, to, to, to give us the wiggle room. What I really wanna know is what you want us to do and we're gonna do it.
Okay, folks. You need a review of these lots again or are you ready to?
I would appreciate, I, I would appreciate a re-review because.
Okay.
It's been some time and I'd like to ensure, especially given the fact that. There is potentially that risk that if there is a lot that is not buildable. We ought to make sure that we, at least from our perspective, have done our due diligence from, from a vetting perspective.
Okay.
If there's any risk, if I may, may, if there's any risk with any of these lots at this point in time, I'd like to know what that is. Before I make a decision personally. A, a decision on which loss I would include as part of that set of lots that would be. Available for, for, to, to, to go through this process.
Let me, let me give you a quick rundown of the lots. It's not that bad. It's only six, six lots. But the first is, and I don't know whether you wanna take notes or just remember it, but so lot one. Is map six, lot forty-four off street or road. It's a vacant, it's vacant land. All of these are vacant, well, not all of them. Okay, it's a vacant lot. It's located partially in Hubbardston, partially in Westminster. It's thirty one point six acres. What I could, it has, the parcel has no frontage, but it does have access to a fifty-five. Foot ride right away from street or road. The lot and right away are owned by the same trust, but assessed to different. Assessed as separate lots. So the right of way is map six lot forty-five, the lot is map six lot forty-four. Both parts, both parcels are on tax title and should be foreclosed together. So otherwise you're, you're gonna get a landlocked lot without the right of way, right? So they must be put together. In, in the suit. And Sandy thought they could be, since they're owned by the same people combined into one suit. I don't know whether that's true or not. But the right of way is wide enough for a lane or minor road under our present zoning. And just, just from a drive by, I'm no expert, but it did appear that the land had a lot of upland and was buildable. You all, you guys know the saga street or road is not the best road. So that's lot one.
May I ask a question if, I mean, a point of information?
Yep.
Regards to this particular, because there's two lots, would that be considered as two separate? Items that need to be foreclosed on or brought in front or therefore being five thousand and five thousand for each one of these?
Ryan. Sandy seemed to indicate to me that the town, tonsils could combine them in one suit because it's one owner.
I think there'd be some economies of scale there.
Okay, so we're gonna refer to that as lot one, thirty one point six acres. With the right of way from street or road. Lot two, and it's right away. I didn't give the right away a separate number. Well, assume that you could put five thousand towards that. To get it started if you wanted to. The next lot is actually important because it is contiguous. It's a six acre acre lot. That apots this thirty one point six acre lot. It's map six lot thirty, forty-three and it actually has frontage on old Westminster Road. So our thinking, when you just look at maps, is it's got three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on old Westminster Road. So. The thinking was it would be great if you could gain access to the first lot. Through, through old Westminster Road rather than through this, this right of way. Because old Westminster Road is actually a pretty decent road. The problem when you drive by it is that it does appear to be quite wet along the frontage. Which doesn't mean you couldn't maybe replicate or put a driveway in it, but it might not be an easy, an easy shot. But if you did put them together, it would give you that advantage and there may be. Parts of that six acre that, that are buildable too. I just was able to look at what you could see along the frontage. So we'll call that the second lot, which is six acres on old Westminster Road abutting the first lot. Third lot is map six, one eleven. It's on old Westminster Road. It's a fourteen point four acre vacant. Land lot with four hundred and twenty feet of frontage on old Westminster Road. It appears to be upland wooded. And might be just a wonderful site for. for uh, cluster development. So I would say in terms of, terms of lot, that would probably be my number one choice. But it's uh, again, 14.48 acres on Old Westminster Road. Fourth lot is a 2.3 acre lot, vacant land on Cruz Road with 350 feet of frontage on Cruz Road. It appears to have extensive wetlands driving by. I do believe it is owned by the butter. Again, I could only see it from the front, so I'm not certain how extensive the wetlands are. There definitely part of it is wet. The fifth parcel is map eight, parcel 10A, which is on Brigham Street. It's a 0.42 acre parcel, so less than half an acre. Was the site, but it is buildable because it's, well, it might be, I shouldn't say that. It's an issue. It had a house on it. It was a house lot. It was a site, I believe, of a house that burnt down. I did a drive, I did not drive by it. I'm sorry to say, I meant to go back out. It was offered by the owner to the town in 2016 in lieu of taxes. And the town rejected it on the advice of town council because there was an undischarged mortgage on it. So it was encumbered. Sandy thinks that mortgage has been discharged, I believe. So in my original notes, I, I included a copy of that warrant article. So I guess it still begs the question, okay, it's a undersized lot that's grandfathered. I haven't done the research on, you know, whether that grandfather status is still good. Probably, probably is buildable because it's not so much like a use, a grandfathered use. It's a grandfathered lot. But anyway, so that's it, a 4.2 acre lot near the middle of town, well, not too near the middle of town, 47 Brigham Street. The last one, my sixth lot, you, you probably all know this. It's a 0.9 acre lot. So it's a tiny lot. It has an antique abandoned house on it. It's quite near the center of town, maybe the third or fourth house in. It's uh, owned by two estates and it's very prominent because the roof of the house has caved in and the chimney, well, the chimney is caved in on the roof of the house. It's falling down. It's definitely a lot that, a house that needs to be removed. The, the issue with it is it drops off steeply in the back. So whether it's buildable, in the end, it may prove not to be, but so there we go. Those are the six lots. I'm actually, we're happy to answer questions on any of them, to the extent I know it, but I don't have any great detail. It's based on what you could see in the records in a drive-by. Questions?
I'm concerned about the one on Brigham Street because I don't, the one, the last one you just mentioned, because I don't believe it's uh, got much of a lot. And it is on the hill there. Um, I don't know if it will be able to be built on again.
The same, the same would be also for the 0.42 lot, which is on 47. So 47 Brigham and 10 Brigham, both of these look like a bit of a risk for any kind of affordable housing, or maybe they're just not necessarily the right type of uh, lots for, for, for that consideration.
And the, the other one, uh, 47 Brigham, that one burnt down many years ago. And then when it did, they, they wouldn't allow them to rebuild. The building inspector put a stop to it. So I don't know if that's going to be a possible lot to put a house on.
Yeah.
Did the building inspector, did the building inspector say they couldn't be rebuilt because he didn't consider it a buildable lot or because the house was too far gone? You know?
It didn't comply with the zoning. It was too, too small of a lot. I don't, I don't remember all the details, but the, the lady that owned it was actually the town clerk at the time. And they ended up, she ended up leaving town because of the house and they couldn't go back to it.
Okay.
So I wouldn't be in favor of possibly those two. Uh, I don't want to waste the money on it. If, if a possibility, sorry, if it's a possibility that they won't be buildable.
Yeah.
Do you want to, is there a sentiment that we should go forward with the other?
First four?
Four?
The only question I still have also is the one that has uh, the, the, the large quantity of uh, wetlands.
There's two that were wetlands.
Well, the one that really concerns me is, is the one that is map one, lot 171 on Cruz Road.
Yes.
If it has extensive wetlands, I mean, the acreage, I mean, again, depends on, depends on the acreage percentage of what the wetlands are and, and how, how to access the buildable component of that lot. So I, I have some concerns about not, not, not to say that it could not be eventually, and I don't think we necessarily, it's a question I'm, I'm posing here is, is we don't necessarily have to go with all three lots or all six lots today.
Right.
Could we go with a subset of these lots, the ones that have the least amount of risk and highest probability of being built as part of a affordable housing plan? And so my, my point is, is lot, you know, number five, number six, I think, and I agree with, with Bill, seem to be very risky at this point in time and probably have a very little little return on the investment, if you think about it from that perspective of being able to be converted into a affordable housing. The other one that again does concern me is, is number five, the, the, the fourth one, which is the one on Cruz Road because of the extensive wetlands. And I, I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to suggest that we do some further exploration of that one. The first three lots, I think, are very good candidates.
Okay, do you want to make a motion? Does everybody agree with that? Are we ready to think about this?
I make, I make that motion, Alice, to go forward with those three lots to, in the process of the tax title.
Do we need to uh, include the uh, lot, map and lot number as part of the motion here? Just to be clear.
That could also be, uh, you should also be mentioning that you're, how much you're allocating to each lot so that the total amount is recorded, please.
I believe the uh, each amount for each lot would be $5,000. So if we go forward with these three lots, it would be a total amount of $15,000.
And do you want to indicate which lots these are? So it's map six, lot 44, et cetera. Do you want to read those out loud or?
I don't have that in front of me, so if somebody could.
You want me to make that again? Instead, you want to retract your motion and I'll make a motion in place?
Whatever you want. You want Francois to make the motion, John, uh, Bill?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so you're retracting the motion. I'll put the motion forth at this point in time for us to consider the allocation of $15,000 for the legal fees that are required for uh, the three following lots. Lot number one would be map six, lot 44 off Street or Road, book 10417, page 365. Second one is a lot which is indicated by map six, lot 43 on Old Westminster Road, book 9458, page 109. The third lot is on map six, lot 111 on Old Westminster Road, book 21340, page 376.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment. All Francois to do, but it's to also include foreclosure on map lot, map six, lot 45, which is the right of way leading to map six, lot 44.
Sorry, everyone, I, I have meeting three I got to get to, but thanks for having me.
Thank you, Ryan.
Good night, Ryan.
Good luck.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Um, there he goes. So, and I guess, I guess.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, I, we have, we have three lots in, in, in motion right now. You're adding a fourth lot, uh?
I'm like, I'm adding the right of way, which was bundled into lot one.
Okay. I, I, okay, I understand it, what I, I understand what you're saying. And I, I was on the assumption that that was all included in here. If it is not, then yes, to your point, the right of way should be also included in here.
Okay. And that was for 15,000, right?
That would be 5,000 per, per group here, which is again, those three lots.
And the right.
Including the right of way, right?
Including the right of way. Well, she thought she could combine them in a case. They can come back to us, I suspect.
If that is not the case, then we should then, at that point in time, know about it and make it, you know, make another motion to allocate some additional funding, should that be required.
Okay.
Can we make our initial motion that we're putting together right now, in case that happens, that we can automatically approve that? If it does, if it comes back to us from the, from the legal team, that we can't do that to appropriate that now.
Can we do this as two motions then? So this is the first motion, the one that was on the table, right?
Okay.
And then after that, we can take your motion, uh, which is to do some additional wording in the event that we have some, some changes that are required. Make that automatic.
Yeah, I think we can do that. So all in favor of Francois's motion, which is 15,000 for?
Christina?
Point of order. Uh, there's not been a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion, Bill Holmans.
Thank you, Bill.
So these are the first three lots on the list as indicated. So, and it's 15,000 for tax foreclosure. So.
Tiger, aye?
Bill Holman's aye.
Alice Lipton, aye?
John Demilia, aye.
Okay, so do you want to make a second motion, somebody, for the right of way? Maybe it would be, let me think how to do this. It, it would be a motion to approve the foreclosure, to the tax foreclosure process for map six, lot 45, which is a right of way, leading to lot 44. And if it cannot be foreclosed in conjunction with lot 44 to appropriate up to five, or to appropriate $5,000 for that lot as well. I don't know.
Motion, Bill Holmans.
Okay. A second?
I'll second that motion, John Demilia.
For the discussion? Okay, I do think if the town council can roll them together because it's one defendant, one lot owner, she will do that. Okay, ready to vote? Okay. Bill Holman's aye, right? Okay.
Francois Steiger, yes, aye.
John Demilia, aye.
And Alice Lipton, aye. Okay, excellent. Okay, moving on.
Just a comment?
Yes.
I am, I, I'm really elated that uh, after all of these years, there is so much progress being made in this area. And I want to, I want to say that Alice, a big pat on your back because quite frankly, you've, 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 you've been the torchbearer of this here and you've brought this one up, uh, up front quite a lot, a, a, a long time. And, and I, I really appreciate the efforts that you've put into place here. Thank you very much for doing so.
Thanks. We hope that, I hope it leads to something. There's no other land, you know?
Absolutely. But I have to say, this is the initiative and the, the energy that you've put in this here has been tremendous. And uh, I think that this is, this is, this is going to yield some very good things for the town. Thank you.
Alice, and I'd like to second that also, uh, years ago, 20 plus years ago, I was appointed to the Affordable Housing Committee from the ZBA. And uh, nothing's really ever transpired since then. Uh, it never really went forward. So my hat's off to you for all the work I put into this. And this was awesome.
Yeah.
No, you guys.
Virtual pat on the back.
Love to see it come to fruition. I am really excited about uh, the Affordable Housing Law. That's because I think that's when you're going to see something on the ground, but I hope this leads to something. All right, so, um, next thing on the agenda, Christina can stop, can correct me, is just a note on nomination papers. So John, uh, get your papers in. We want you on board.
Yeah, working on getting the signatures.
Okay, my papers are in and the signatures have been verified. So you guys, both, you know, I'd appreciate your vote. Tell people around you.
At the point, there are no current contested for these two positions.
Point of, point of inquiry, uh, has the number of required signatures changed since last year?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't believe so. I believe it's the same. John, do you need any signatures?
Yes, I do.
If it would be, okay, I'll call you like tomorrow, the day after, and I'll call you from outside and put the, the papers somewhere I can get it and I'll come and sign it for you.
What the clerk is doing is giving him a whole pile of separate nomination papers. So nobody has to sign more than one, but, and you can circulate them. But John, I also wanted to tell you, because one of the signatures I got was from Joyce Green, you know, used to be the clerk. And on the petition, there's a blank where you, where you signed that you accept the nomination. And so if you use more than one petition paper, you have to sign every single one of those petition papers. Okay?
Okay.
Stuck on a technicality. Okay, so new business, there actually is, oh, the MVP cap and summary. All right, are you guys ready to hang in there a little bit longer? It's getting late. I kind of want to come back to that, Christina, and take this and go down instead to matters not reasonably anticipated, because we do have a matter that wasn't anticipated, which is that the owner of the solar field at 147 Williamsville Road, who had has, who, who has a um, special permit to extend the solar fields, wants to extend his special permit. He's requested an extension. This is further complicated by the fact that apparently this property has changed owners. So Christina, can you fill us in on that?
Christina, your microphone's off.
Yes, I just realized that. Thank you. Um, yes, a few days ago, I received an email from a Ms. Sweet, who said she's with, um, forgive me, I believe it's ClearView. One second. Erin Sweet, who's with Clearway, I apologize. I'm asking, um, with a request for good cause extension for their special permit uh, at 147 Williamsville Road. I then immediately reached out to um, the chair and Bill Murray with regards to, because Bill is supposed to be working with Borrego with regards to getting this uh, special permit over, having a planning board overview. So Bill came back to me and with a quoted number uh, and said that if he needs to look into whether or not the change of ownership was properly documented, it's going to cost him a certain amount of money. I forwarded that on to Ms. Sweet. Um, and then Bill's going to review it to find out, um, in the, in the case of an extension, it wouldn't necessarily be a an issue or something that would have to go to public hearing, only because they've already begun to a certain extent, construction, I think, they have groundbreaking. Uh, it would just be trying to, they, they're asking for a one-year extension, but Bill would be looking, and Bill Murray would be looking into that a little more in detail. So I have forwarded his quote on to um, Ms. Sweet with the 15% administrative fee adjusted. Um, and I'm waiting to hear back from her on whether or not she's willing to put up that bond, which Bill says he may not even use all of it to have the matter investigated, so that we know where we stand with regards to granting a, an extension on that special permit.
Do we know whether Borrego changed its name to ClearView or ClearView's a separate buyer or?
I'm not certain. Um, she said by way of background, Clearway Energy Group acquired this project from their partner, Borrego Solar Systems. I mean, we've been calling this Borrego for the last several years, but it says, according to this, that they um, actually acquired it in August of 2018, which is almost just a few months after the special permit was signed.
Okay, so is there, there is a solar field there already and this is an extension of the solar field?
No, no, this is a brand new solar field at 147 Williamsville Road.
Okay, and what have they done to date?
I'm not certain. We'd have to ask Bill Murray with regards to that. He's been getting updates from Borrego with, uh, he said via email.
Okay, and uh, do we have a filing fee for an extension of a special permit in our fee structure?
I do not believe so, no. Uh, the last time we had one before the planning board, I, I don't believe that we, I'm not sure if we, I'd have to look. We've only had one extension in the last year.
Yes, I know. I remember that one. Um, okay, so do you know how, when their present permit expires, how long we have to act?
I believe we have only about a month and a half left, um, but I would have to check the exact dates on that special permit. I believe it was signed in June of 2018, but I will check on that.
Okay, um, so we have two options. Okay, um, so we have two options here, guys. We could, we could, I mean, do they have, do they actually have a paper in front of you? They put a petition in, it's in writing, right?
They do.
So we could, I suppose, vote with a contingent to approve it. I guess the risk would be otherwise we don't meet till June third, then we'd have to act on June third probably, right?
We make a motion as long as Bill Murray's report comes back favorable of continuation of the, um, the extension of the permit? We could say contingent on Bill Murray's report, we'll make a motion to approve, approve it tonight.
Point of order, ma'am. Um, because they've submitted basically an application for extension, they're probably okay even if they go beyond the June twenty twenty, deadline because they've, we have sixty days to act from any, um, special permit extension.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great point of order. So let's hear what Bill has to say first on the third.
I think it's important for us to get this full scope from Bill.
I mean, they should have, if they have a title issue, they should have been notifying us, you know, in the past, right? And if we give them a pa- give them a permit without making them toe line, but I don't want them to, I don't want to jeopardize their project really, but let's help hear from Bill and we'll put it on as an action item on the third.
And point of information, uh, Madam Chair, and that is, is that Clearview is, uh, to my, best of my understanding is a separate entity from Borrego. It's not the, it's not a subsidiary or anything of that nature. They are, they are a separate company that does provide electricity to consumers.
Okay, so, so Christine, if you can just follow up and let them know that the title issues have to be straightened out before we're going to act on it?
Yes, I copied them on an email from Mr. Murray stating what four points of order he would need to do and, and how much it would cost him in order to do it. So we're waiting to hear back from Ms. Sweet whether she's willing to front the bond for the, um, amount of money that Mr. Murray asked for, um, before progressing.
What, what was that amount, do you know?
Um, I'm sorry, one moment.
Are we talking hundreds or thousands or?
It was, um, twelve hundred dollars, um, which I then added our fifteen percent administrative fee when I asked Clearway to pay for it.
Okay, well, they're going to hit, if he doesn't, if they work, they can hire their lawyer to straighten out the title and then Bill's fee would be less, right? So.
Well, it's also a point, ma'am, we currently own ten thousand dollars of a bond that was submitted by Borrego for this project for Bill Murray, uh, to provide oversight. So I, I think that the reason that Bill might be pushing for the twelve hundred separately at this point is because if that bond is currently unsecure, I mean, Borrego could ask for their ten thousand back and then we'd have to get the money from Clearway. So I think that's why Bill said that he, he would like the twelve hundred separate because he has to find out if we, if that ten thousand is currently something we should be returning.
Okay, well, we need to resolve that before we approve an extension too.
Exactly.
In place.
Not only that, but all the work that Bill did last year, he never, he hasn't invoiced on yet because there were all those delays due to the rain. And so, um, it's, it's all sort of a kerfluffle at the moment.
All right.
Bill, you're muted.
It was a good catch on your part, so.
The other point I'd like to bring forward here, if this transpa- this transpired back in two thousand and eighteen, now all of a sudden they, they realize that they have to extend this, they have a problem with it because they, they don't have the right name on it. They probably realized this before and then just waiting to the last minute. Is that true?
Probably. I don't know, but they always, uh, we, we need to know we have a bond if we're going to approve it and we need to know who the ownership is and straighten out the mess. And then I think in this kind of year, we, you know, probably be likely to extend it.
Yeah.
Especially where the town is looking for, you know, wants to, this looks favorably towards solar fields, so. All right, we'll put it on the agenda next time. We've got a plan.
Christina, at some point in time, whatever correspondence you have received that you can share with the members of the board would be great.
I'll forward that to you now.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, um, okay, so I also, uh, now I want to jump back to do, uh, that you heard some of this tonight. It all kind of ties in, but the, the Massachusetts or the, uh, municipal vulnerability preparedness grant group, has met. It met originally the first time before our last meeting and I gave you a copy of the map that was generated. And so it's had three sessions since then. So I feel like I should give you a little update on this. Can you give me about five minutes, everybody? So this task force, it's completed these three sessions last week. Um, and you may recall that it, it's, the goal was to identify needs and vulnerabilities uh, of the town in light of climate change and climate change they defined as shifting seasons, more flooding, more drought, more fires, severe snow and rain events, uh, significantly more days over ninety degrees and significantly less days under thirty-two degrees. So this group is working with an engineering firm and, um, as well as MRPC. And they're, they're going to generate a report prioritizing problems that we cited. And then when this study is done, it qualifies the town to get state grant money to try to address some of these problems. So the second session, the first was mapping and identification of vulnerabilities and so forth. The second session was focused on infrastructure, very much what Jonathan just presented in the, um, transportation chapter, so it ties in, the dams and disrepair, the undersized culverts, the bridges that are in disrepair but are being addressed and roads subject to flooding. They also addressed out of date flood maps, which is something we have to address because the flood maps from nineteen eighties, they're hundred-year flood events or more like a five-year flood event now. They talked about frequency of power outages, increase in brownouts on hot days, um, spotty cellular service, which is a problem for two reasons. Um, one, because emergency responders can't reach each other because they're dead spots, you know? And, and also because citizens during power failures, cellphone service often goes out as well. Uh, and lack of community shelter in an emergency, they talked about, which is really huge. And the reason we don't have a shelter is because we could have a shelter, the school's adequate, but there is no backup generator that'll run the systems. The only generator, backup generator the school has does emergency lights and the freezer in the school, the refrigeration. And then also they raised a concern about, um, septic systems in the town center, which are small lots and have, I guess, been problematic. So that group ended with identifying the highest priorities in town, which, um, were, we felt, this group, a need for a cell tower and there is a twelve-acre site in town that's at the intersection of New Templeton Road and Route sixty-eight, which has been identified for it. So a new cell tower, a generator for the school, so it can be used as a community shelter in the event of a blizzard or some other emergency and the replacement of three culverts because the bridges are already, as Jonathan said tonight, approved for re- rebuilding. So that was, that was session two, session three, uh, focused on environmental concerns and they were identified as the environmental elements where the state, state forests, state and town, wetlands, brooks, ponds, brownfields, the only brownfield thing we really have is the gravel pits, which are significant and open space and recreation. And the problems with the environmental concerns were vector-borne diseases like triple E and Lyme, increased risk of forest fires, invasive plants and insect species, well failures, which tend to felt, wells tend to fail if they're not deep enough in an extended drought. And again, community, public water supply and sewer, um, solutions for the center of town. So the group came up with some action items on that, which, one of which was mentioned by John, which is to put the draft sites for firefighting on the map, um, because you don't have hydrants in town. That's what we've got is draft sites. To review emergency response measure, measures, investigate, joining a mosquito control group, uh, updating wetland and flood plain mapping, which is something that falls to us as the planning board. Uh, review and revise storm water runoff regulations, which we should also get Bill to help us with. Develop, uh, with DCR a forest management plan to address the fire risk for forests. Uh, gravel pit restoration, interestingly adding a splash pad for cooling to the playground, which can be built, which is actually a possibility because there is a, um, irrigation system for the playing fields that might be tied into, um, and modern monitoring, um, and education for chicken mosquito-borne diseases. So then the final session was focused on actions to adapt to climate change. And again, we have a big role to play in that because it's review and revision of, um, site plan review, zoning and other relevant regulations, um, in addition to updating the, the maps, the flood maps and the wetland maps. One of which was identifying and figuring out how to serve low-income and higher-risk populations. Uh, some of those are common sense things, which the town already does, like they donate fans if there's a heat wave to elderly, but it's a area that needs more attention. Uh, plans to monitor and address climate-related illnesses, improve community communication, develop more transportation options for the elderly, which are seriously lacking. Uh, what John said about cutting the marked routes, the bus routes has impacted our seniors too. Somebody mentioned a plan for animal evacuation in the event of barn fires or animal shelter fires, emergency training courses. Again, more housing for the elderly. There are currently one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight seniors in town and the population's growing. And to improve public building accessibility, which is a problem in town. So there's my quick summary, which I think you should be aware of. Questions? Are you, I bored you to death anyway?
Very interesting.
There will be more. The next phase of this is that there is going to be some kind of a public listening sessions set up. Uh, but this isn't anything we have to pull together. MRPC is helping us and, and the engineers. And it does, uh, open the doors to some big grants and we could put on if we wanted to and it's finished, we could encourage like Ryan to really help us come up with gravel pit solutions. And he seemed to be, you know, willing, that was one of the things that could be done. It's like brownfield remediation. So kind of keep that in mind. So also what came out of that, which is a quick word, and then I think we're just about done for the night, is, um, the, the speaker at that session, um, who was most impassioned was Claudia Provencall. Do you know her? She's the, she's the, um, Director of Senior Services in town. And she really spoke to us really from her heart. And she said, we really, we really need subsidized housing for seniors. There are just not enough services. So I reached out to Hubbardstead House because this is something for the Affordable Housing Committee I want to do anyway and found out the following. I talked to, uh, uh, their director and here's what I found out. So the facility was built in nineteen eighty-six by an outfit called RHI, which is Regional Housing Improvement. It's presently owned and managed by Recap Solutions, which stands for Resource for Communities and Management, which is a successor nonprofit to the original RHI, but Recap now appears from their website to focus mainly on, in terms of their construction division, on water and sewer projects. They don't seem to be in the affordable housing construction business. But they do still provide the management for Hubbardstead House and the, the manager there is Liz Tetrow. And she gave me the following facts and figures. So Hubbardstead House has thirty-six units in two buildings and, um, both buildings are two-story buildings and only one building has an elevator. The property is, the property, meaning the site of Hubbardstead House is fully built out, so no more units could be added. They had some issues with their, their, uh, septic a couple of years ago and she knows that for a fact. They could not add more units. Uh, all thirty-six units are presently filled. There's currently forty-eight names on the waiting list, fifteen for studio apartments, thirty-three for one-bedroom units. And the turnover of the units is between zero and five per year. So if you think about that, you've got a vacancy rate, let's say, and on average, three vacant units a year and you've got a waiting list with forty-eight people. So that, you know, through the division, it's sixteen years. Now, some of those people are going to die or move to nursing homes or live elsewhere, but that is a huge problem. And she says the waiting lists in all the surrounding communities are just as long, if not longer. So if we double the number of senior housing units in town, she could fill them immediately.
What are our options here, Alice? What can we do to move forward?
What can we do? So this is the issue. What can we do? So, um, you know, what can we do? I think it's falls on us. We need to, we need to work on this. So one of the things we could do is if, if we get one of those lands that like the fourteen point five acres on Westminster Road, you know, is think of, of making it senior housing. There is an outfit in this state, well, you know, there's the Department of Housing and Community Development. That's who our housing production plan document went to. And they partner with, um, two groups. One is called CHAPA, which is a Citizen Housing and Planning Associates. Um, and the other CDEC, you've probably heard of CDEC, Community Economic Development and Assistance Corporation. And those two agencies offer advice to communities on developing subsidized housing for seniors. So usually the way those are done, senior housing are built, some, most towns do not build their own. They're built by, they're built just like Hubbardstead House was. They put out a bid and they get a developer that's used to working with, you, you, you know, knows how to work, um, to build with grants and subsidized funds and, and then you put together that partnership. So I guess the question is, I'm happy to reach out, just like I did to, um, Carolyn, with Habitat for Humanity and see if anybody wants to come in and tell us how we might start to resolve this problem, how you go about building it. I mean, another, another site might be the town gravel pit, which isn't a bad location because it's got, you know, it's on Pitcherville Road, but it's not far from sixty-eight. What Claudia wants, says what would be the, her all-time wish would be, you could locate senior housing somewhere near the center of town because seniors need to, you know, they need access to programs and grocery stores and stuff.
I think that's the most important thing is, uh, a lot of the seniors don't drive as, as we get older. And they don't, they can't get around, so it'd be either access to like Gardner, close to Gardner or closer to the center of town, here.
Right, so if you went up with the gravel pit, which is like half a mile down Pitcherville Road, isn't too far to Walmart, which would be helpful. Walmart also is a, does have a marked stop that goes there. So we do, but Ryan was explaining the transportation problem is really serious because we only, we only can afford one van in town. So most of that, that, the van does service Hubbardstead House. But, you know, the van driver takes people to an appointment and then it's got to sit there. So it's, you know, these are people that really can't afford to live anywhere else, you know, it's subsidized housing. It's a third of their income and that's how it's fixed. Other communities have done this recently. Paxton put up a really nice senior complex, um, about five years ago.
Westminster has one right out, right in the center, right next to the, the new town hall.
Yeah. So do you want me to pursue it further? I mean, I'm, I'm willing, um, it would be under the umbrella of the Affordable Housing Committee. What do you think, guys? As our next step in affordable housing? Yeah. Shall I reach out and see what they, shall I continue my little investigation?
I, I think, I think it makes a lot of sense. You have done a, uh, exceedingly good job at penetrating this area and, uh, getting the information that is, you know, shared not only with us, but also with the community at large through Zoom here now and the recording. I think it is a very serious problem. It is one that we really need to recognize and it goes hand in hand with the affordable housing. So I would, I would urge you to continue to get that information and then. And then from our perspective, try to see if we can co-join this here with the efforts that we're looking at, potentially even with some of these lots that we're looking at, or maybe even with the, you know, taking advantage of the, I don't know, the town pit might be a reasonable, not the town pit, the gravel pit. Yeah. Might be a reasonable location. I mean, those are all things that need to be studied, but getting that information, I think, is crucial for us.
Okay. I'll try to. If everybody's in agreement with that, it's kind of extending, sending our meetings, but we are both bored. So, you know, nobody else is probably going to do it. So let's, let's, I'll see what I can find out. Okay. I don't have any more. Anybody else? Old business, new business? Christina, have I forgot anything?
The only thing I want to mention is that so far there have been no special permits submitted for any marijuana establishments. I wanted to make sure that was stated at the meeting, because they have gone ahead with a couple of the community host agreements, but there have been no special permits submitted. Also, I am making updates to the planning board's website, just to make it a little bit more user-friendly. So if anyone wants to look at that, there are several links that are currently, we state they are under construction, but I plan to make it a little bit more easy to access. I'm going to have a solar site, gravel pit site right off the main page, so that we can let the town know what we're doing with these and how we're proceeding forward.
Excellent. Sounds good.
I did have a question, and I don't know if this is appropriate time for me to mention this here. I sent something to Christine about the RFP that had gone out for the lot. First of all, do we have any updates in regards to this here, as to where, where does that stand right now, if I may ask?
It's been approved.
It has been approved.
And I got a note from Ryan that it has, is going to be published in, on the website, the Gardner News and some, what was the third one? I mean, it's in the publication process, was approved last Friday.
And I.
It's going out and I did call Carolyn.
That's what I was going to ask you next.
And I, and she was able to find it. I sent her the link.
And they're still interested.
They're planning the bid, so.
I did have a question. I don't know if, Madam Chair, you have that information. I asked that question regarding the, once, if, if, if an entity such as, such as Habitat for Humanity would take over that piece of property, at least for an interim period while they're doing construction and getting it ready for affordable housing. Is that property at that point in time immediately subject to taxes by the town? Or is it exempt from taxes during that period?
Usually, yeah, I can only speak from my, I mean, my legal background on this.
Yeah.
But it's this, it's usually the status of the town on January 1st. So if it's still a vacant lot, it's taxed as a vacant lot. If it's a house that's 30% complete, it's the value of the work.
It also might have to do with the fact that it will be owned by a nonprofit during that point of time.
And that's a good point. And that is, is, I mean, taxing an entity that is bringing this into the tax base eventually, and taxing it in the interim might be detrimental in the sense that it takes revenue, it takes revenue into the, it takes monies away from the project potentially. And that's why I was, for me, this is a bit of a conundrum. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what the implications are here for an entity such as Habitat for Humanity.
No, I'm wrong. I'm sure you're right. I'm sure Christine is. I was thinking if it was an ordinary person that bought a house, you know?
I was thinking, I was thinking, I was truly, truly thinking of a nonprofit organization like.
I'm sure they're tax exempt.
Okay.
Till they sell it. And then it would be taxed at the value of the house, but I think they could consider that it is, isn't a affordable house, so be taxed at a slightly less rate, because that would affect the value. You're right.
But that's only at the point in time when it gets sold or it gets, it gets passed on to a, a new person who will be then the owner of that affordable unit.
Private owner, right.
Exactly. Okay, fine. That makes sense.
But eventually it'll get in the tax base, just not for a year.
Okay.
All right. So the town, you know, sold out of the three other lots, they sold one of them.
Okay.
And they had bids on them, but they decided the bids were too low to sell all three. So there's still going to be two lots on Ragged Hill Road that they're probably going to rebid.
I see. Okay.
That's, that's an update on that whole situation.
Thank you, Alice.
Anything else, guys? Otherwise, next meeting, June 3rd, is that right, Christina?
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't think we need a second meeting this month, unless something comes up. So good luck, everybody. Stay well.
We put a motion to adjourn?
Second?
I'll say second.
Lift all in favor?
I'm Sir Steiger in favor.
I, Bill Holmans in favor.
John Demilia, aye.
Aye, okay.
Everyone, appreciate your time.
See you next.